Well, good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District Six. Today is the 13th day of February 2023. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us as we pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Fitzie.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, welcome, whether you're joining us online or whether you're here in person. We're glad that you are here and joining us for this meeting. We just have a few announcements I do for as we begin, and that is, first, the Colorado Council of Teachers of Mathematics Spotlight Educator for February 2023 is our own Northridge High School math teacher, Abby Briggs, and we just want to, first of all, congratulate Ms. Briggs on that recognition and make sure that everyone in our district is aware of that because that is a fantastic recognition. We have so many wonderful teachers in this district, and again, to stand out, we say this often, to stand out in this district amongst so many great professionals, you have to be truly good. So, congratulations to Ms. Briggs. As a board, we got to visit a couple of our newest bond projects. These are the last two bond projects, big bond projects, that we're doing from that 2019 bond that the community approved. And so, we've seen a lot of these already come to fruition at Greeley West and Chapalo, at our new school, Twinton, and Krista McAuliffe. But we have two more, and we got to view those just the other day. So, James K. Madison? I'm looking at, no, not James K. Madison, but it's James K. Polk. James Madison Steam K-8, that's what I'm thinking about. It's going to be a K-8 school. And so, that bond project is proceeding on plan, on time, on budget, and we're excited to get to see that. And then, we also got to visit and see our new Career and Technical Education Center, as well as the new Jefferson High School. And again, both of those projects are coming along, and it was great to see those. We will be talking about our Career and Technical Education Center tonight. And so, I just wanted to remind everyone, as I like to do, that we actually do have career and technical education still in public education. I hear that often, that why did we take shock classes and those kinds of classes, VOTEC classes, they used to be called, out of education? Well, we still have plenty, and there is a new Career and Technical Education Center that will be opening there. We will have cosmetology, as well as construction management, cybersecurity, and several others. I can't remember off the top of my head. But we're excited for that. Both of those should open. Everyone with fingers crossed in August of 2023, so they should be ready for the start of school. And so, I want to just, I wanted to make everyone aware of that. Those are all the announcements I have. So, we are now to the approval of the agenda, and we'll need a motion to move forward.
I'm with that. The Board of Education in Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. So, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We are now to our board member comments and reports. And so, we'll start with Dr. Campos Fizzi tonight.
Yeah, so the last couple of weeks, or I think it's been three weeks since our last meeting, or almost four, have been busy for the board. On February 2nd, we all got, most of us got to go to Jackson Elementary, which is actually my neighborhood school. They are an amazing school. They were early adopters of the Avid curriculum, and I was really impressed with Ingrid, the principal there. And they really have a family feeling there, and they talk about our students. There's not like her student and my student, it's our students. And I think that's why they've performed so well for so many years at Jackson. So, it was fun to go into that school for the first time. And the following day, I got to go to Museum Night for the Fred Charters School of Innovation, which was so much fun. It's an open house, I think, to the whole community. So, if you guys are ever interested, they have another one in the spring, I believe. But the kids from all grades get to show off all kinds of different projects, from how bunnies interact, to the origins of the Mexican hat dance, to these like real, I forget if they were sheep or pig lungs that had been exposed to cigarette smoke. And it was just really impressive, and the kids are all so confident and well spoken and creative. And I enjoyed that very much. Then, on the 6th, as many of you know who are parents, it was parent teacher conferences throughout a lot of the schools, and I got to spend my morning at Chapalo, talking to a lot of parents, and then my afternoon at Brentwood. Those are two of my liaison schools, and getting to know the parents, the families, and talking to them about what they thought of our calendar proposals, which you'll hear more about later today. Then, as a board, we got to attend the Smart Lab grand opening at Prairie Heights Middle School, which was exciting. The kids there, it's part of an after-school program right now, that's how they've launched it. But they're very appreciative of the Smart Lab. So, that was great. And just like Michael mentioned, or President Matthews mentioned, we got to tour Madison Elementary, the new Madison Elementary School, which just looks amazing, and is going to be such a contribution to that community, which is a high-impact community, as well as Jefferson High. I love that Jefferson High has a daycare as part of it, that yeah, they're offering five different career programs, from early childhood education, to cybersecurity, to construction and welding, to cosmetology. And I hear that soon we'll be able to make appointments for haircuts and such. So, anyway, it's been a whirlwind the last few weeks, and it's been really cool just to be inside of all these buildings and meeting the kids and meeting the teachers. So, as a new board member, I've just found it all to be very exciting, and just appreciate District Six more and more every day that I get to experience it.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, like Bren said, it's been busy. I missed quite a few things, and I still made quite a few things. 26th was their Success in Six Awards from the Success Foundation that we got to go to at Ames Welcome Center, and that was really amazing. I think they said that they had the most nominated nominations ever this year. And so, to see and recognize all the staff, and I think there was even some from charters, and it looked like maybe even a whole category for support staff. And it was just really amazing to see that recognition and to see how happy and proud other nominees and their little support groups that came to support their nominee, and just watch that whole process and how much pride they have in their jobs and the joy it brings them to recognize each other. So, that was really awesome. That one was one of the highlights. 127, we got to do an all-day work session, which was really beneficial. We got to learn a lot of each other and kind of just dig deeper into ourselves a little bit. So, that was really beneficial. GRAP graduation on 128, if that was a Saturday, I don't know if you guys have ever had the chance to go to a GRAP graduation, the Greeley Alternative Program. But to me, those are really, really touching and fun to see a lot of kids that are maybe first-time graduates of high school and their families, and gone through some adversity and trials in life, and to see them come back through and finally get that diploma, and you can see the pride in the, and they bring their whole families are loud and proud and rambunctious, and it's such an event, and just a witness. And we got to do it in the Greeley West Auditorium, which is amazing all in itself. So, that was fun. Jackson tour was amazing. They're doing some great things with the Avid program and everything over there. Really enjoyed our time there and greeting the kids as they came to school. The Smart Lab at Prairie Heights is one of the last ones, I think, to get done. We're getting close to having them all, or will be close here soon. So, just to watch that, and the donors being there and recognizing, just kind of getting to meet some of the community members that I wasn't even aware of. And the Success Foundation, just is so wild. It's so amazing to me that there's a whole organization raising money to help support our kids on top of everything else the community is doing. And I think we're just so lucky to live in, you know, from where I came from, there was nothing like this. So, this just is, I think maybe it gets taken for granted, but I think we really need to just kind of take a step back and realize there's a lot being done for our kids, and we are very blessed and lucky to be in a community such as Greeley. On 29, Natalie drug me down to the Casby Capitol Day. I wasn't real keen on going. I'm not a fan of Denver, nor many of the politicians down there. So, I did want to go and just see what it's about. A lot of my negative feelings were confirmed, but I did learn a lot while I was down there. They have a lot of bills coming through that can and will affect D6 and art students. So, it was great to just learn more about that and do some due diligence and just embrace the process. The process is what it is, and we're not changing that, no matter how much I dislike it or like it. But it was a good day. So, outside of that, one of my favorite things coming up is the CTE Center, and we got to visit Madison and the construction there, going from the bean topping to where Madison is today is night and day. Those guys are doing a crazy good job. And I just, I think maybe Madison might be the most, from the school they had to the school they have, they're getting, it might be one of the biggest upgrades out of any of the bond projects that I've witnessed. And West was huge, but that tiny crappy school that they're in, and I don't know how better to describe it, but it is miserable. And so, for you guys just to work there every day, like, good job, because it's going to be worth it, because that school's going to be beautiful, and you're going to have a pile of happy kids running in come this August. So, and then, of course, the welding and the construction and the trades, and just to kind of tour that and see, you know, the early child development and all that that's going to be, is going to be such a huge asset to the community as a whole, between the construction industry, the oil industry, the wealth, you know, all the stuff that we're trying to do as a community to really develop and bring up kids that are career and college-ready. This is, in my opinion, one of the things we were missing, you know, unknowingly. I didn't come here saying that, but just to have that realized, we were really lucky, and it's just kudos to the community to get, like, good job, you guys. But thank you, and I'm glad you guys keep me. Don't kick me out yet, I'm having fun.
Ms. Mash?
Well, my colleagues did a great job of recapping all the things that we've gotten to do. I was just going to say about Madison, there was one point where we were touring the new building, and we got to go out on the roof. And so, then we had this bird's eye view of the current Madison, and all of its round loveliness. You could just see that there are no windows, and it is circular. And so, yeah, that bird's eye view kind of was really great to see where the green space is going to be, just what an amazing campus it's going to be for those students. My favorite part, when we get to visit the schools, and I think this is a little bit of a shift since I've been on the board, but having the student ambassadors, having the students tell us about their school and their programs and what they love about it, kids are...
So they should be ready for the for the start of school. And so want to just wanted to make everyone aware of that. We are now, those are all the announcements I have, so we are now to the approval of the agenda and we'll need a motion to move forward.
Second.
Thank you both. So any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We are now to our board member comments and reports. And so we will start start with Dr. Campos Spitsy tonight.
Yeah, so the last couple of weeks, or I think it's been three weeks since our last meeting, or almost four, have been busy for the board. On February 2nd, we all got, most of us got to go to Jackson Elementary, which is actually my neighborhood school. They are an amazing school. They were early adopters of the Avid curriculum and I was really impressed with Ingrid, the principal there. They really have a family feeling there and they talk about our students. There's not like her student and my student, it's our students and I, I think that's why they've performed so well for so many years at Jackson. So it was fun to to go into that school for the first time. And the following day, I got to go to Museum Night for the Fred Chardis School of Innovation, which was so much fun. It's an open house, I think, to the whole community. So if you guys are ever interested, they have another one in the spring, I believe. But the kids from all grades get to show off all kinds of different projects, from how bunnies interact, to the origins of the Mexican hat dance, to these like real, I forget if they were sheep or pig lungs that had been exposed to cigarette smoke. And it was just really impressive and the kids are also confident, well spoken and creative. And I enjoyed that very much. Then on the sixth, as many of you know who are parents, it was parent teacher conferences throughout a lot of the schools and I got to spend my morning at Chaplough, talking to a lot of parents and then my afternoon at Brentwood. Those are two of my liaison schools. And getting to know the parents, the families and talking to them about what they thought of our calendar proposals, which you'll hear more about later today. Then as a board, we got to attend the Smart Lab grand opening at Prairie Heights Middle School, which was exciting. The kids there, it's part of an after school program right now, that's how they've launched it. But they're very appreciative of of the Smart Lab. So that was, that was great. And just like Michael mentioned, or President Matthews mentioned, we got to tour Madison Elementary, the new Madison Elementary School, which just looks amazing and is going to be such a contribution to that community, which is a high impact community, as well as Jefferson High. I love that Jefferson High has a daycare as part of it, but yeah, they're offering five different career programs, from early childhood education to cybersecurity, to construction and welding, to cosmetology. And I hear that soon we'll be able to make appointments for haircuts and such. So anyway, it's been a whirlwind the last few weeks and it's been really cool just to be inside of all these buildings and meeting the kids and meeting the teachers. So as a new board member, I've just found it all to be very exciting and and just appreciate District Six more and more every day that I get to experience it.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, like Bren said, it's been busy. I missed quite a few things and I still made quite a few things. Twenty-sixth was their Success in Six awards from the Success Foundation that we got to go to at Ames Welcome Center and that was really amazing. I think they said that they had the most nominated nominations ever this year and and so to see and recognize all the staff and I think there was even some from charters and and it looked like maybe even a whole category for support staff. And it was just really amazing to see that recognition and to see how happy and proud other nominees and and their their little support groups that came to to support their nominee and and just watch that that whole process and how much pride they have in their jobs and the joy it brings them to to recognize each other. So that was really awesome. That one was was one of the highlights. One-twenty-seven, we got to do an all-day work session, which was really beneficial. We got to learn a lot of each other and and kind of just dig deeper into ourselves a little bit. So that was, that was really beneficial. Gap graduation on one-twenty-eight, if that was a Saturday, I don't know if you guys have ever had the chance to go to a Gap graduation, the alternative program, but to me, those are really, really touching and fun to see a lot of kids that are maybe first time graduates of high school and their families and gone through some adversity and trials in life and to see them come back through and finally get that diploma and you can see the pride and the, and they bring their, their whole families are loud and proud and rambunctious and it's such an event and just, just a witness. And we got to do it in the Greeley West Auditorium, which is, which is amazing all in itself. So that was fun. Jackson tour was was amazing. They're doing some great things with the Avid program and everything over there. Really enjoyed our time there and greeting the kids as they came to school. The Smart Lab at Prairie Heights is one of the last ones, I think, to get done. We're getting close to having them all or will be close here soon. So just watch that and the donors being there and recognizing, just kind of getting to meet some of the the community members that I wasn't even aware of. And the Success Foundation just is so wild. It's just, it's so amazing to me that there's a whole organization raising money to help support our kids on top of everything else the community is doing. And I think we're just so lucky to live in, you know, from where I came from, there was nothing like this. So this just is, I think maybe it gets taken for granted, but I think we really need to just kind of take a step back and realize there's a lot being done for our kids and we are very blessed and lucky to be in a, in a community such as Greeley. On two-nine, Natalie drug me down to the Casby Capitol Day. I wasn't real keen on going. I'm not a fan of Denver, nor, nor many of the politicians down there. So I, I, I wanted, I did want to go and just see what it's about. A lot of my negative feelings were confirmed, but I did learn a lot while I was down there. They, they have a lot of bills coming through that that can and will affect D six and our students. So it was, it was great to just learn more about that and do some due diligence and just, just embrace the process. The process is what it is and we're not changing that, no matter how much I dislike it or like it. But it was, it was, it was a good day. So outside of that, the, one of my favorite things coming up is the CTE Center and we got to visit Madison and the construction there, going from the bean topping to where Madison is today is night and day. Those guys are doing a crazy good job. And I, I just, I think maybe Madison might be the, the most, from, from the school they had to the school they have, they're getting, it, it might be one of the biggest upgrades out of any of the bond projects that I've witnessed. And West was, was huge, but that tiny crappy school that they're in, and I don't know how better to describe it, but it is miserable. And, and, and so for you guys just to work there every day, like, good job, because it's going to be worth it, because that school's going to be beautiful and you're going to have a pile of happy kids running in come this August. So and then of course, the, the welding and the, the construction and the trades and, and just to kind of tour that and see, you know, the early child development and, and all that that's going to be is, is going to be such a huge asset to the community as a whole, between the construction industry, the, the oil industry, the wealth, you know, all the, all the stuff that we're trying to do as a community to, to really develop and, and bring up kids that are career and, and college ready. This is, in my opinion, one of the things we were missing, you know, unknowingly, I didn't come here saying that, but just to have that realized, we, we were, we're really lucky and it's just kudos to the community to get like, good, good job, you guys, but thank you and, and I'm glad, I'm glad you guys keep me. Don't kick me out yet, I'm having fun.
Ms. Mash?
Well, my colleagues did a great job of recapping all the things that we've gotten to do. I was just going to say about Madison, there was one point where we were touring the new building and we got to go out on the roof. And so then we had this bird's eye view of the current Madison and all of its round loveliness. You could just see that there are no windows and it is circular. And so, yeah, that bird's eye view kind of was really great to see where, where the green space is going to be, just what an amazing campus it's going to be for those students. My favorite part, when we get to visit the, the schools, and I think this is a little bit of a shift since I've been on the board, but having the student ambassadors, having the students tell us about their school and their programs and what they love about it. Kids are, are honest, they're creative, they're so well spoken and you can just see the pride that they were chosen to be the one that gets to speak with us. The young man who talked to us at the Smart Lab at Prairie Heights, he just couldn't get the words out fast enough. He was so excited to tell us what he was working on and how great it was. And he even started thanking the donors himself. It was, it was really great to see how excited they were about that. So yes, we've just got so much to celebrate, so many wonderful schools and students and staff. I'm glad we got to celebrate them with the Success in Six awards. I also got to go to Allstate Choir at the Buell Theater. We had six Greeley Central students and I think one student from West, and I apologize if there are students from other schools that went to that as well. But once again, as with, we, I went to that combined league choir, which is a little more like this region, but it's amazing to hear these world renowned clinicians who are working with the students in our area and, you know, the state of Colorado, just speak so highly of their collaborative efforts, their willingness to be taught and coached, their, the way that they just interact with each other, brand new people that they've never been with. And it was just really positive. Shout out to music educators and so that was really beautiful as well. And yeah, our visit to the Capitol. So every school board in the state has the opportunity to belong to the Colorado Association of School Boards and then we use our collective voice to sometimes influence, helped, hopefully influence our legislators. But when we went down and talked with them, they talked about advocacy from the individual boards and the individual board members is even more powerful than, than the lobbyists because we are colleagues with, or we are contemporaries, colleagues, I guess, with, with the legislators. We were all elected by the same, by the same constituents. So, so when we go and develop relationships with our representatives and our senators, that, that helps us to, to serve the community together. So that was kind of what we were doing and learning about. And yeah, we'll continue to build those relationships.
Mr. Norwood?
Well, I wasn't fortunate enough to be able to go to all the places three weeks ago. Tonight, we had a water valve that decided to break in our house. So I kind of been putting my house back together for the last three weeks, but I did get a chance to go out to Prairie Heights. First time that I had a chance to be to that school, got a chance to walk around. What a great place. The Smart Lab was fantastic, the donors were great to visit with, really a nice time out there. Did get a chance to go to the Gap graduation. And again, like Mr. Bentley said, any of you that get an opportunity to go to that graduation, it is really special. It means a lot to the families and they really support them and I would encourage you to go. So still putting the house back together. Get to go home tonight, do a little bit of work, but other than that, that was my three weeks.
Ms. Sullivan? Yeah, sorry.
Mine will be short and sweet. I've just been, really been struggling with my recovery from the surgery, so I haven't had the opportunity to attend these events. So warning, I was released to drive. This is my third night out. You don't want to be near me still, but I'm looking forward to be able to get more active and start attending the events again and whatnot. So thank you.
Ms. Pappas?
So I am going to just highlight a few things. I won't go over a lot of things I haven't mentioned, but I would like to recognize longtime educator in District Six, Julie Emmett. She was a teacher at Billy Martinez. She was a teacher at Billy Martinez for many years. And then after her retirement from Billy Martinez, went and worked at Madison as an intervention teacher. And then most recently, she has been, let's say, volunteer at Dos Rios Elementary and she passed away a couple of weeks ago. Want to take a minute to recognize her. She has been recognized here many times, is giving, I don't know, what is it, a thousand volunteer hours, I think, a year. So just, just want to recognize her and say that I, I miss her. The other thing I'd like to mention is thank you to Elizabeth Farber, who organizes mock interviews for our Daniel's Fund Scholarship final lesson, also our veteran finals. And so I thank you Elizabeth, but also thank you to the community members that come to the mock interviews and help give our students the opportunity to experience those interviews. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. Just a different tale on Prairie Heights, yes, that Smart Lab is amazing, they all are. But in one of the pictures I took, it was posted on Facebook, that there's a quote on the wall, which I didn't even notice, someone noticed that there is a saying that says, "Morning is different here." And I think that's what we can say about this Smart Lab, that it is different here. So thank you for that. And then I, I just don't really want to call you out, Mr. Bentley, but Madison, whether it was in the roundhouse or not, was, is a school that is a community school, a great school. And yes, it'll be really wonderful to have a brand new building. But I just would like to say that over the years, Madison has educated many, many students and it is a community of, it is a community school. And I'll just give you a little bit of my personal story about that. My mom started her teaching career in nineteen seventy-two at Madison Elementary. I was a principal at Madison Elementary and this fall, my grade ranks in three, I started kindergarten. So I just, I just want to bring that up, that Madison is more than just a building.
My comment would only be directed to the building. Nothing more.
And then also, as far as Jefferson and CTE, another historical perspective, many of you, well, some of you, maybe not many, but some of you will remember when our students from the three alternative high schools were placed at Jefferson High School, which was an elementary school. Jefferson Elementary School was a K-five building. And so all of those high schoolers, not knowing each other, came to this building, East Greeley and Small Elementary School, and they have done fabulous, outstanding job educating students. Students have thrived under the leadership there and the staff. We thank everyone for that and appreciate it. I am so grateful to our community for being able to provide a brand new building that will even give more opportunities in addition to the CTE programs.
Thanks, Ms. Pappas. I don't have a lot to add. Would like to thank my fellow board members for making, making those appearances and especially Mr. Bentley and Ms. Mash for going to the, to the Capitol and taking, taking, that's, that's not an hour or two, that's, that's a day that they take out of their schedule to do something like that. So thank you to them. Also want to thank you, say thank you to the Success Foundation and for, for a couple of things. The Success in Six awards, those are, and we've mentioned a lot of things, I don't know that everybody understands what those things are. The Success in Six awards are awards that are given to our, our educators, our administrators, our classified employees. And they are, they are recognized in, in that ceremony in the same way that, that a lot of our athletes and movie stars are in, in their ceremonies. And so thank you to the Success Foundation for making that happen. Also thank you to the Success Foundation for, for those Smart Labs. And we have put Smart Labs and these Smart Labs, for those that don't know, they are, they have the technology, then our, our kids are presented with the technology in former library spaces to, to do some really incredible things that they can't and have opportunities that they don't always have in a classroom. And I can't remember exactly how much it costs to put one of those, those in before, but for everyone, the Success Foundation has put in, we, we've committed to putting in one and we're getting close to having six Smart Labs in just about every school, every elementary school in District Six. And what this does is, we talk about our CTE Center and the need to get kids' career and technical education and the need to get kids, our students, skills that, so that when they graduate, they have marketable skills. They don't have to go somewhere else to get those skills. But that really starts in elementary school, it starts in, in middle school, it starts with being able to understand what, why what you're doing every day is important and how it might be important to your future. And that's what these Smart Labs do for our kids. They give them the opportunity to see how they might use these math skills and science skills in, in some, in robotics or in computers and in a way that they can't always imagine in the classroom. So just want to thank our, our Success Foundation, who, as, as Mr. Bentley said, such an incredible partner to have and we are so thankful for them. And then I'll just, one other thing that nobody's mentioned that several of us went to was the Greeley Central and Greeley West basketball game. And just want to say congratulations to Greeley West this time. I said congratulations to Greeley Central at the last game. So, and although I should say Greeley Central girls also won for a second time, but the Greeley Central, or the Greeley West boys took it home this time. And I think those are, that's all of our reports. And so Ms. Lemon, will you give us our work session report?
The work session began with a review of upcoming events. The board invited members of the Council of Student Representatives, excuse me, Representatives to a discussion about the Council of Student Representatives' participation in District Six board meetings. Legal Counsel Nathan Fall provided a legislative update, which was discussed by the board. Director of Human Resources Christina Crane presented the proposed calendar for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. The work session concluded with a debrief from each board member.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our Council of Student Representatives' report. And so Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say as our student, Council of Student Representatives are coming forward?
Pardon me. Welcome, I see we have a contingent from what looks to be Frontier Academy here tonight. And I see several of your board members in the room as well, so no pressure on you all. But welcome. I'll turn it over to you.
All right. I don't know if this is fancy. Okay, it sounds like it's working. Hi, I'm Jackie Schmidt. I'm one of the assistant principals at Frontier Secondary School. Thank you, Dr. Pilch and the board, for inviting us to come share some awesome things that we are doing in our school this year. I brought with me three of our amazing students, amongst many, of course, to share with you some of those things that we've been working on. So go ahead, guys, take it away.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Castillo and I'm a senior at Frontier Academy. After graduating, I plan on going to either Colorado School of Mines or MIT and want to study mechanical engineering. At Frontier, I am most involved with theater, academic decathlon, NHS and other leadership teams.
Hi, my name is Blythe Schaller and if admitted, I plan to attend the University of Miami next year to study marine biology and ecology. I'm a senior. And then at Frontier, I'm most involved in, I'm the co-founder and president of Women in STEM and the vice president of Interact. And then I'm also involved in more like leadership teams and theater and stuff like that.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Baumgerner. I'm, I'm a sophomore at Frontier Academy. At Frontier, I'm involved in Women in STEM Club, Key Club, Academic Decathlon and Theater, as well as the Student Health Advisory Council for District Six and the District Six Council of Student Representatives.
We want to start tonight by reviewing and expanding off of last year and covering the goals that we had. We continue to have our glows from last year in our school. We have a strong group of people that are always deeply devoted to athletics. We also have just as many more passionate for theater and our music programs. Last year, our biggest goal was to try and amplify our school spirit and sort of come together as a community. In order to pursue this, we came together with our four biggest main service clubs, National Honor Society, Key Club, Interact Club and Athletes Summit, to put on Wish Week. Working with Make-A-Wish Colorado, we were able to have a week of competitive fundraising and bring out our school's spirit. Through everyone's efforts, Frontier Academy was able to raise over sixteen thousand dollars for Make-A-Wish. We also had opening and closing assemblies for, for Wish Week and this is where we were able to see our school's spirit. This was our first full assembly since, since after, since after COVID and it was very successful and very exciting to see our school's spirit.
Okay, and then one of our goals this year is to improve our student attendance at our school's sporting events. We do have a pretty good amount of students attend boys' games and a lower attendance for girls' games. So our goal is to raise attendance for girls' games and our sporting events in general. I have attended other District Six sporting events and it's really cool to see a big student section and students are having fun and they're participating. So one of the things we've been trying to do is have like halftime games that involve like students and teachers and prizes and stuff like that to bring attendance and it's has yet to work completely, but we're doing our best.
Our question for you is what is Frontier able to do to be better connected and a part of the District Six community? We would like to ask if you have any questions for us.
Thank you, guys, for being here tonight, first of all. And I do think we'll have a few questions coming for you. And so I think Dr. Campos Spitsy is first.
So less of a question, more of just a good job for the Women in STEM. So majored in biological sciences with an emphasis on neurobiology, physiology and behavior. So I love when I hear about other girls who are not intimidated by science. So yay.
Ms. Pappas?
Thank you for being here tonight. So I think in answer to your question, we did, we did meet with Gillian Richard this evening to talk about how the Council of Student Reps can be more involved in, can you hear me now? The district work. So I think that we will be bringing some of that information back to the council and I think that might address some of the wonderings that you have this evening. Thanks.
Ms. Mash?
I appreciate you sharing with us the many different things that you're involved with and I wondered if you wanted to use this as a time for a little news briefing about your school's spring musical?
Yes. So we are doing The Wizard of Oz. I'm the scarecrow and Ramos is the tin man. So it'll be April twelfth through the fifteenth and we're really excited. We just started rehearsals last week and we rehearse almost every day and yeah, very exciting. You're welcome to join, to come.
And Blythe, what were those dates again, one more time?
April twelfth through the fifteenth. It'll be Wednesday through Saturday, starting at seven at the Frontier University Auditorium. And there's also a matinee on Saturday.
So Wizard of Oz, April twelfth through fifteenth. I don't see any more questions or comments for you guys, so I will just say again, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate the time. We know that you guys, as seniors especially, are very busy at this time of year. I know, I'm sure there are applications still to fill out and scholarships still to fill out and things that must get done. And so we appreciate you taking the time to be with us here tonight. So. We are now to our superintendent's report. And so Dr. Pilch, would you give us your report, please?
Thank you, President Matthews. I, I just first want to recognize the students who are here tonight from Frontier and their families and some of their staff and board members who are here tonight. You know, it has been a, a very deliberate effort on the part of both our charter schools and District Six to form a, a strong working relationship. And not only do you see that spreading across to our students who are a part of the Council Student Reps, but you also see that tonight as you, as you look to approve renewals on two of our charter contracts. So just really proud of the relationship we have with our charter schools and our charter school leadership and a big, huge thank you to them for partnering with us in the way that they do. I have a few announcements, another celebration. February fifteenth, the day after Valentine's, is School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. So give a shout out to your school resource officer, let them know how much you appreciate them and, and thank them for the work they do. Like many of us, there is a shortage of staffing and so our Greeley Police Department and our Evans Police Department are both facing staffing shortages, of course, and yet both departments continue to, to dedicate school resource officers to our school district. And I'm, I'm very grateful for that partnership as I know that you all are too as well. So thank you to our resource officers. And a next group to thank, of course, is February twenty-second, our Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So I hope you'll reach out to your bus drivers, let them know how much you appreciate them. I see our Director of Transportation, Chad Holly, here tonight. Mr. Holly, please, please let them know how much we appreciate them and, and the hard work they do every single day to get kids to and from school and to activity trips. And we're just so grateful for them because again, this is an area that is hard to fill across all organizations. If you're looking for somebody who has a CDL and that's required for employment, it's, it's a tough job to fill because they are in high demand. So we're so grateful that our drivers and the rest of our transportation staff give to the students here in District Six. You may notice that we have some of our team members absent tonight. We're a little short-staffed, but I wanted to share with you why. We're excited that this week, we are conducting the interviews for Northridge We're excited that this week, we are conducting the interviews for Northridge High School's principal and Greeley Central High School's principal. This is a big darn deal, hiring two high school principals in one week. And we're really excited about our candidate pools. We have staff and parents and community and students involved in both of those hirings. And I hope by early next week, a week from now-ish, I hope that I have some recommendations for you for our new high school principals. I also wanted to share, a lot of talk tonight has been given around the Success Foundation and all that they do for us. Just a reminder to everybody that the Success Foundation breakfast is March 6th, coming up really quickly, at 6:45 in the morning at Greeley West High School. So we'll try out the new cafeteria there at Greeley West for the event this year. Always a good event. If you have not registered for that, you can go to the District Six Success Foundation website, which is D6SuccessFoundation.org, to register for that event. It is a free event, and it's a fundraiser because we are still fundraising. And you mentioned the smart labs, President Matthews. Those smart labs run right about $150,000. So when a donor or donors come in with those dollars to do a lab, then we come right alongside them and do another lab here in the district with those mill levy override dollars. And so grateful to our community to be able to do that. I have a recommendation for you tonight for hire. And I know you all have seen this, but I am very pleased to introduce to you Mr. Michael Boyer. Michael, would you stand up and let us all say hello to you and talk about you for a minute while you're standing, okay? Mr. Boyer is my recommendation as the new director in human resources. He takes the position that was previously held for many years by Robert Hepperali. We're so, so glad to have you, Michael. And he comes to us with a former school district director of human resources experience out of the Fort Morgan School District, then the city of Fort Morgan stole him away or vice versa, but he also has city experience in human resources. He has over 25 years of experience in human resources, risk management, safety. So really brings a wealth of experience to us. And most recently, he has worked at Cargill in human resources as a senior specialist. Not sure what that means, but it's kind of a boss in human resources. But really, really excited. This is an exciting hire for us, to be able to bring in somebody from the outside who also has this kind of experience in human resources. So welcome. Pending your approval tonight, Michael will actually start with us Wednesday morning, bright and early at our district leadership team. So congratulations, Michael, I think, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda is our public participation. And so I just want to read a quick introduction. The board welcomes the comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments to the board. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. The board typically does not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response to the input, but will ask staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of our school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. All speakers and those in attendance shall conduct themselves in a non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. With that read, first tonight, we have Ms. Stacy Castillo. Ms. Castillo is a parent of a student or students enrolled in District Six. Welcome, Ms. Castillo. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. We've all heard the old saying, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And I feel like that applies for some parents. Every time a parent makes a complaint, it's a new wheel that squeaks. And the parents are met with being told that there are great words, great efforts, they are going to take care of the situation. But it's left upon the parent to continuously follow up, to make sure that those things are being done. And taking time out of your day is not a privilege that a lot of parents in the district has. I can't tell you how many people I've encountered, parents, that have an issue and they are concerned. They make a complaint and they get told it will be looked at. But then it seems that everything kind of falls by the wayside. I know that sometimes it may seem that I'm being aggressive or disdainful to any of you up here, but I think that you all could admit, in every interaction that you've had with me, it has been nothing but polite. You can see that I'm a person that wants to work together to get resolutions for these children because they truly do deserve it. Their squeaky wheel needs to be taken care of by putting oil on it and not just being worn out. It almost appears to parents that the district is just trying to pacify and deflect a parent in hopes that it will just die out. The concerns that parents are having are issues that their students encounter, like being assaulted by another student. I feel like every week, there's a new fight video on one of the school's social media pages that is ran by the students. Or a teacher assaulting verbally or physically a student. Or the students who are really upset about the critical race theory and the social emotional learning that is being pushed in their classrooms. We need to do better. We need to come together and bridge this gap so that we can get these squeaky wheels, because we know there's a lot, the oil they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next tonight, we have Mr. Robert Walker. He is also a parent of a student enrolled in District Six schools. And one maybe that will be enrolled in District Six schools in the near future. Welcome, Mr. Walker. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Okay, so it's no secret that these meetings here in D6 have been besieged by people within this community and organizations from outside District Six and even outside the state of Colorado, intentionally misusing language and taking the most salacious passages from works of art in order to terrify people into joining them. They use terms like pornography and child grooming to describe Sherman Alexie's The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. Alexie's book won the National Book Award for Young People's Literature. And in case you're all wondering, the National Book Awards do not give awards for pornography. No, these folks are misusing terms like pornography and grooming intentionally to scare people and frankly, should be deeply ashamed of themselves. By misusing these terms for political gain, these folks create a climate in which parents and children may not know actual grooming when it is occurring, putting families at risk simply because they didn't like a book. It is also worth noting that the final prong of the Miller Test, the test used by the Supreme Court to define obscenity, states that an obscene work in question, and I'm quoting here, "taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value." The people wishing to ban these books love to cite the Miller Test but are keen to gloss over that final bit. And when will it be enough? When these folks, will they be happy when these books are banned from D6 schools? Were they happy when the masks were no longer required? No. As those of us who grew up reading know, when you give a moose a muffin, sometimes that moose will be drinking his milk while goose-stepping into Poland, for example. These folks will come for our public libraries next and on and on, because that's how these things work. It is a death of the soul by a thousand cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next tonight, we have Ms. Kelly Langley Cook. She is a parent of a student, students enrolled in District Six schools.
I totally thought it was three minutes, so. Good evening. I'm also a 15-year veteran teacher in this district, and I currently am a teacher trainer at the University of Northern Colorado. And tonight, I'm actually here as my official capacity of the Frontier Academy Executive Committee, which is our tiny baby school board. I wanted to show up tonight to deliver an apology. I've only been to a handful of school board meetings. Most nights, I'm making dinner and checking homework and thinking about a load of laundry I didn't take out three weeks ago. Most nights, I'm just living my life. And most nights, you all, most of you are volunteering for this job. For 23,000 students, so beautifully diverse that we have 78 languages in our district, for 1,200 teachers, and for more than 100,000 people in Greeley and Evans, you're supporting and creating outstanding educational experiences. And I'm so lucky, because as a teacher trainer, I get to be in your schools and see them every single day. And there are a few bad apples that are infiltrating our schools. Embarrassingly, we recently made the Washington Post, not because we have amazing teachers getting kids to graduation with programs like Avid, or because we have an outstanding nutrition program or stellar student athletes. We made the post because you have been harassed and bullied by a tiny minority of folks, and for this, I am so sorry. I'm sorry that it might seem like those voices represent us, and it doesn't. They are a small group of people who are bad fruits. And I'm sorry if some of the negative angry voices seem like they represent all of us. I'm sorry you have shouldered this. But here's what I'm not sorry about. I'm not sorry we elected you. I'm not sorry for the ways you have shown yourself to be brave, honorable, reasonable, open-minded, and caring. I'm not sorry for the way that you have stood in harm's way to protect our students. Board members, Superintendent Pilch, thank you for putting up with all of this. As a parent and a professional educator, as a teacher trainer, I am with you. Frontier Academy Board stands with your board as you continue to bravely navigate these tough waters. Thank goodness our students have you as their role models. Thank goodness I do.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next tonight, we have Ms. Bianca Fisher. Ms. Fisher is a parent of students, students enrolled in District Six schools. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I, along with Kelly Cook, serve on the Frontier Executive Committee. And honestly, my whole hope in coming tonight was to extend thanks and gratitude. My professional capacity is the Director of the Downtown Development Authority. And in my work, I see how much effort goes into moving our community forward. And I am so fiercely proud of the community partners and everyone who puts on their shoes and their hats and advances our community forward. And I see District Six as such an incredible partner in this work, and I am so incredibly proud. In the 17 years that I have lived in Greeley, it has been notable in the last seven years specifically, what a tremendous change has come. And this is from an economic development standpoint. This is for our kiddos. I have two, I have a third grader and fifth grader. We are so incredibly proud. And truly, I just wanted to come and extend thanks. It is selfless, it's tiring, it's frustrating, it's exhausting. I don't know who would sign up for it, but you all do, and I am so thankful. And so on behalf also of the DDA Downtown, we have a small little token of appreciation we would like to give to you, just a few little goodies from downtown. We love having you in our downtown district as well, but truly, thank you for the work that you do. It is notable, it's remarkable, and our future is dependent on it and so benefited by it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Next tonight, we have Ms. Lori Ozzello. She is a parent of students or students enrolled in District Six schools. Welcome, Ms. Ozzello. Thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
Oh, thank you for the privilege. As Mr. Matthews said, my name is Lori Ozzello. I've spent most of my career as a writer and editor. And I'm here tonight because it alarms me that there's the possibility of book banning in our school district. We spend years teaching kids to read and encouraging them to read. Then a small vocal group generates a list of unacceptable books and puts pressure on school boards to take them out of libraries. To borrow a line from Macbeth, "The effort to ban books is full of sound and fury signifying nothing." My parents were both educators, and I spent a lot of time in libraries as a kid. I wandered the heaths with Emily Bronte. I visited the Civil War South with Margaret Mitchell. I rafted the Mississippi with Mark Twain, and I solved mysteries with Nancy Drew. Banning books in schools limits perspective and creates knowledge gaps. Readers miss out on stories that bring history and imagination and perspective. Banning The Diary of Anne Frank doesn't erase the Holocaust. Neither does banning LGBTQT and authors of color obliterate homophobia and racism. Banning books accomplishes nothing. It's a waste of time that only creates a false sense of reality, and it does not protect children or anyone else from the world. Please resist the pressure to ban books. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ozzello. Next tonight, we have Mr. Gabe Yanis. I hope I did not pronounce, mispronounced that. Welcome, Mr. Yanis.
You got it. Yanis is correct.
Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to start with a quote from a book that was labeled pornography in one of these meetings, The Kite Runner. Children aren't coloring books. You can't color them in with your favorite colors. I have over a decade of Christian education and working in church and parachurch ministry under my belt, and I'm very familiar with how easy it is to label something pornography by using out-of-context quotes. Unfortunately, there's a segment of our society that's been gripped with a form of fanaticism, something defined as excessive and single-minded zeal, or as Joe Strummer once said, "something with no tenderness or humanity." We have seen in the past that this kind of fanaticism towards banning books doesn't stop with banning books. It continues and moves forward into other aspects of our lives. I present instead that we use readings that are challenging to us as an opportunity to reignite our flagging civil discourse. Instead of receiving a difficult reading as a form of personal or cultural attack, instead, we can use them as an opportunity to learn. As Megan Hollis says in her article, "The Importance of Reading Books That Are Challenging to Our Views," we should do the difficult work of empathy. Expose ourselves to the views of others. Read about their experiences without judgment. Read books that present opposing viewpoints and then eat open to discussion. If you're worried about what your child is reading, take that opportunity to read and learn with them. To end, I'd like to quote from scripture. In Proverbs 18, we read, "An unfriendly person pursues selfish ends. Fools find no pleasure in understanding, but delight in airing their own opinions. To answer before listening is folly and shame. The human spirit can endure in sickness, but a crushed spirit who can bear that? The heart of the discerning acquires knowledge, for the ears of the wise seek it out." Do we choose to make unbearable crushed spirits by silencing those we disagree with? Or do we choose wisdom and empathy? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Next tonight, we have Russ Doty, who is a resident of District Six. Do we have Mr. Doty? Next, we have Ms. Chalice Springfield, resident of District Six. Welcome, Ms. Springfield. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you for having me. As Mr. Matthews said, I'm Chalice Springfield. I'm a business leader in the community. I've lived here for 31 years. I don't have children in the district, but believe strongly in being involved in the district, because what I know about schools is we have strong schools, we have strong community, and we have strong businesses. For much of my 30 years, I spent the time in the real estate industry. And not to take us back, but I have a wonderful quote that Ray Kroc from McDonald's, the founder of McDonald's, said that I love, "Be green and growing, not ripe and rotten." And what I want to say and acknowledge the district for is their being green and growing and how far we've come. So I can remember going to meetings when I was in real estate and people not wanting to come to our district, to come to our community because of our district. I don't hear those complaints anymore. And I don't hear those complaints because of the progress and the initiatives that this school board and this district has taken. Really excited, I know there's been a lot tonight talked about CTE. We're seeing not only new schools that we don't have to be embarrassed about and roofs falling in and, you know, no windows on the walls, needed renovations, but also the career and technical education programs that I think are really exciting, that aren't just standard what we might see. Math and science, those are excellent, but I'm really excited about the cosmetology and the welding and the construction management. So those kinds of things just tend to build business. And when we build, you know, when we build the schools, we build the community, and we build business, and more people want to move here. And so I just want to applaud and thank the district and the school. And so I just want to applaud and thank the district and the school board for the work that they've done, the positive efforts that they brought us along, as Bianca was saying, in the last seven or 10 years. Just to actually be able to be proud of what's happening in the district. I want to acknowledge for everything that we know you've done. But even more so, I want to acknowledge everybody in the district for the things that we know you will never know that you've done because that's probably where the real work occurs. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Springfield. Next tonight, we have Ms. Maria Foster. We have Ms. Foster. She is a resident in District 6. And so thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Foster. Welcome. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I grew up in Denver and attended Denver Public Schools. And down the block from me was a boy named Marty. And I didn't know Marty very well, even though he was my age, because he attended private Catholic schools until 10th grade. And unbeknownst to me and everybody else at that time, from the age of 12 to 15, Marty was sexually abused by an adult man who was a camp counselor. He tried to kill himself twice, once with pills and once with a gun. And when he started high school, he was still thinking about suicide a lot. And on a whim, he tried out for a school play. And he got a part. And in his own words, I'd like to tell you what happened next. Not long after that first musical was over, the irrepressible drama lady Nancy cornered me in the hall one day and asked if I was planning on taking part in the next project, the spring production of Oliver. You have a shot at a good part. I walked away calculating that if I were to get into the show, then I'd have to postpone killing myself for several weeks. If I started, I couldn't possibly miss rehearsals. Let everyone down, I'd have to wait until summer. I got into Oliver. And when it was over, the summer came, and I had to postpone my plans again because I was cast in the all-city production of West Side Story. And so it went. Death deferred because I could hold a melody, because I got the part, got to sing. Suicide on hold for rehearsal. And this is just an example of, to me, the power of some of the non-academic offerings that our schools have, that you never know how, what kid you're going to really reach. This might be an actual lifeline for some child because there's a drama department, and there's a choir, and there's a band, and there's a team, a sports team they can belong to. And I've heard about so many of the wonderful clubs and activities that our schools have. And so I commend the board and the district for being able to offer all those things for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. She also is a resident of District 6. Welcome, Ms. Foster. Thank you for being here. You'll have two minutes.
In addition to being a resident of the district, I volunteer in the schools three to five days a week, so I see a lot of the awesome things that are going on. I'd like to start tonight with a quote by Edwin Markham. "He drew a circle that shut me out. Heretic, rebel, a thing to flout. But love and I had the wit to win. We drew a circle that took him in." This book, which is called All Are Welcome by Alexandra Penfold, portrays what I hope for all children and families in our schools, regardless of age, gender, ethnic background, disability, immigration status, language of spoken, gender identity, socioeconomic status, et cetera. Part of feeling welcome is seeing oneself represented in the staff, curriculum, and books that are available to students. So I bedtime story for you all. All are welcome. And you may read along. The kids always do. Pencils sharpened in their case, bells are ringing, let's make haste. Schools beginning dreams to chase. All are welcome here. No matter how you start your day, what you wear, when you play, or if you come from far away, all are welcome here. In our classrooms, safe and sound, fears are lost and hope is found. Raise your hand, we'll go around. All are welcome here. Gather now, let's all take part. We'll make music, we'll make art. We'll share stories from the heart. All are welcome here. Time for lunch, what a spread, a dozen different kinds of bread. Pass it around till everyone's fed. All are welcome here. Open doors, rush outside, we will swing, we will slide. We'll have fun side by side. All are welcome here.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Mr. David Meek. All right. Next tonight, we have Ms. Julia Richard. Ms. Richard is a resident of District 6. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Richard. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Pilch. Dr. Pilch, I've been able to watch you work here in District 6 since 2015, and the results continue to be impressive. Rising graduation rates, ongoing development of career and tech opportunities, even innovative looks at the school calendar. It's impressive. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for embodying the values of this district. The Board of Education, thank you for seeking this position as our community leaders. I know that it takes time from your families, from your work, from the other things that you enjoy. It takes a commitment to learn about the policies, the people, the programs that make up our school system. But then again, that's also the homework that voters in District 6 elected you to do. We expect effective school board members. School board members have a desire to serve students, a strong belief in the value of public education, the ability and the desire to work as a team to get things done, the willingness to listen to all sides of a story before making an informed decision. These traits make for effective school board governance, and they are what voters expect. Earlier, we saw the students from the Council of Student Representatives, and they are an impressive lot. Your actions and your statements and your behaviors at the board table in work sessions, out in the community, serve as models for these young leaders and others. Because be assured, they are watching, and they are learning from you. In fact, each of us who come to this podium is teaching a lesson to these students. So I encourage all of us to be thoughtful about the lessons we're giving.
Thank you, Ms. Richard.
Thank you.
Next tonight, we have Mr. Steve Teetz. Welcome, Mr. Teetz. Mr. Teetz is a resident of District 6. Thank you for being here, and you'll have two minutes.
Well, good evening, Mr. President and Board. My name is Steve Teetz. I've been in District 6 for about 36 years. And there's been some, some positive, but it's quite a bit of negative. And I'm going to change it a little bit. There was a speaker you had earlier. Her name was Stacy. She was talking about working together. I tried that. I've gotten nowhere. And it's about the students riding the bus Greeley Evans Transit because I know your school bus drivers is short. But so is Greeley Evans Transit, but not as short as the school bus system. You know, I want to live a nice peaceful life. But when you get on the bus between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning or from 2:30 to 5:30, it's not peaceful or safe or even healthy. They cram it in like sardines, and it's not good for your health as well as safety to the bus. They stand next to the, right to the door in the back. If a bus driver has to stop real fast, they can go through the door. They kind of congregate around the driver as well, and you can't get through in and out as well. And I've talked to the city council, I've talked to you a few times. I talked to, I have in the past talked to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board from the city of Greeley, and it's gone in deaf ears. Also, I'm on a committee called the Citizens Bus Improvement Committee. We've been talking about this. And they made a suggestion that maybe the school district can hire monitors between those times I said, and for the Greeley Evans Transit to have help control the students because they are disrespectful and also causes it... Anyway, I know I'm short of time. But anyway, I just want to, I'm concerned about the safety and the health of the students.
Thank you, Mr. Teetz. Next tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Miller. Ms. Miller is a resident of District 6. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Miller. You'll have two minutes.
Roses are red, violets are blue. You don't love us, and we don't love you. Yet here we are, despite the disdain, hanging out with the commies we came to constrain. Where do I start? There's so much to cover. Let's jump right into the students of color. This garbage is racist, and I'll interject. White was a color last time I checked. All students have color. Let's not get confused. How did King's message get so misconstrued? Character matters, not religion or race, but that's not the thinking D6 has embraced. You're failing our children. Our students can't read, yet white guilt and privilege is what you will teach? The narrative's so tired and just promotes hate. Instead, we could teach them how to relate. Next topic is porn. You can love it or hate it, but give it to kids, and that's when we'll forbade it. Our children are prey to the perverts who groom. Just look all around us. Some sit in this room. We're not banning books, just want to give our permission if in fact what they're reading isn't worth our suspicion. Graphic stories of rape still awaiting review. Still polluting the minds you're exposing them to. Take them all off the shelves if reviews aren't on time so that meanwhile, our kids aren't exposed to this slime. And how inappropriate that you'd be so concerned with the sex of our children and their genders affirmed? Does this get you off telling kids they can be a sex that is different than what they can see? Your jobs, education, and student protection, let's focus on math instead of erections. Next, I'll address the exorbitant funds we spend on Ms. Pilch and the circus she runs. $300,000 a year must be nice, but I checked on this website, and I found the real price. $327 is the actual figure. GovSalaries.com will paint you the picture. $270,000 was spent to chip student IDs without our consent. Our 66 logo is, last but not least, graphic design with the mark of the beast. We've asked them to fix it, and I have some bad news. Change isn't forthcoming from Pastor Matthews. He's an obvious fraud, and he's sown his seed. They'll be known by their fruit, as the famous book reads.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next tonight, we have Ms. Jackie Bellandere. Thank you, Ms. Bellandere. You'll have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, no one's asking for a ban. And the last meeting, a woman stood here and said, "Passage in the book some might deem offensive, can in context be meaningful and helpful." But when Ms. Weber read one of those passages here, I don't think you found them meaningful or helpful. In fact, I would think a sex assault survivor would probably feel as shocked as you did. And I can't help but wonder if a victim might feel revictimised reading a graphic sex assault. Schools should be a safe place for kids to grow and thrive, not to potentially become another statistics of a sex assault by an employee of District 6 or be introduced to porn that becomes a lifelong addiction. Last year across America, there was a school employee arrested almost daily, daily, for sex crimes. How many predators are walking the halls today? Any of them use the contested books in the grooming process? Maybe someone should investigate that. And it's ridiculous that we followed your guidelines on reporting these books so now you're moving the goalposts so we can't challenge. Really? That really shows who you are. And as though you all sit here, meeting after meeting, congratulating yourselves on how great everything is and how proud you are of District 6, you're robbing our children of their future opportunities by expecting less from them. According to Public School Review, this district's average ranking is 3 out of 10, which is in the bottom 50% of public schools in Colorado. Your average math proficiency is 22%, and reading proficiency is 36%. So maybe that'll save them from the books if they can't read them. And you're proud. And when I graduated, we had to complete way more credits than you require now. So parents and kids, if you're still able to, take advantage and take all the math, the science, and the English classes you can. Or better yet, homeschool your kids so they have a better future. And I also want to say, I was in the overflow, and nobody came out to see if I was out there, which I figured I probably needed to come in, so that should be corrected.
Thank you, Ms. Bellandere. And thank you to all of our speakers tonight. We appreciate you being here and bringing your thoughts before us. That concludes our public speaking tonight. Next is our consent agenda. And so to move forward, we will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? I don't see any, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Fitzy.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Papas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, next on our agenda is that update on our Career and Technical Education Center that we talked about. And so, Dr. Pilch, I will hand it to you to introduce this update.
Thank you so much. I am pleased to introduce... It's me, not you, sorry. Thank you so much, President Matthews. I'm pleased to introduce Jenny Schilling, our Director of Career and Technical Education, and Mr. Jordan Carlberg, our Coordinator for Career... Are you guys okay? Okay, okay. So these are our career folks. And these are our folks who will be leading our Career and Technical Education Center. Also on tonight's agenda, after this presentation, we will be giving you a recommendation on the name for the new Career and Technical Education Center. So they may, they may share that secret with you as they launch into their presentation. What we've asked Ms. Schilling and Mr. Carlberg to do tonight is just to give you an update on, on the current status of the Career and Technical Education Center. You had the opportunity to see the building about halfway done, two-thirds of the way done, I guess, last week. And you learned about the different programs that will be offered at that building and how the building will be laid out and the opening of that building in August. I know you're curious about the enrollment and what is the number of requests we have in each of those programs we have there. So I think that Mr. Carlberg and Ms. Schilling are both ready now to share with us their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch, and members of the board. I'm pleased to share with you alongside Jordan Carlberg an update on the Career and Technical Education Center. We started this work over a year ago with a redline footprint and a computer-generated schematic in imagining the possibilities of a Career and Technical Education Center. We are thankful for the visionary leadership of Dr. Pilch and the support of this board in expanding the opportunities available to our students and grateful to our community for passing a bond and MLO that has allowed us to improve and enhance the career pathway work in District 6. Pictured here is the current state of the building as of just last week. As you can see, exterior walls are up and windows are framed. And it has been shared with us that construction is on schedule. Our focus remains to provide a rigorous course of study ending with post-secondary credits, work-based learning opportunities, and industry certificates in cosmetology, education, cybersecurity, welding, and construction with an electrical focus. The capacity of each of the pathways at the CTE Center is noted here with a total enrollment of approximately 150 students. Students will attend either an AM session or a PM session, Monday through Friday. And great care is being taken in developing a schedule at both the CTE Center and Jefferson High School that is independent from one another, providing different times, classes, and lunch start and end.
335 students from across the district applied for one of our five pathways, with 133 applying for cosmetology, 55 applying for construction, 85 for welding, 39 for IT, 23 for early childhood/teacher cadet. All of our pathways, except for early childhood/teacher cadet, currently have a waitlist. The application for the CT Center opened in November with a message sent out to students and families. Flyers were created and posted on social media. School visits were made to inform students of the opportunity. The application closed mid-January. Acceptance letters have been sent via email and IC messaging, and we are waiting for students to confirm their spots. Students on the waitlist will be contacted later this week if spots become available in their chosen pathway. The student applications were processed through a blind weighted lottery, similar to the process used for open enrollment, with attendance and on-track graduation weighted slightly higher due to limited seating. The categories of the lottery are the... The categories of the lottery are the same categories other districts have implemented in attendance or in acceptance into their CTE Center. Attendance and on-time graduation were heaviest-weighted categories as attendance directly correlates with student successful completion of the pathway. And credits towards on-time graduation are essential to ensure students graduate on time and are prepared for their post-secondary goals.
I'm excited to share that we have filled teaching positions for construction, cosmetology, and teacher cadet. Second interviews are scheduled for the IT teaching position later this week, and we continue to actively search for a welding instructor.
It is our goal that all pathways offer students the opportunity to earn industry-recognized certificates or college credit. Listed here are examples of industry certificates. Students may have the opportunity to learn. However, much of this is dependent on instructors' credentials. In construction, cosmetology, teacher cadet, we have hired teachers with industry experience and credentials required to offer these opportunities. In addition, we will continue to support all students around the district to take classes in their pathway regardless if they're at the CTE Center or their home high school.
Thank you for allowing us to share the CTE Center update with you this evening, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you both for being here tonight. I bet we have a few questions for you. Although, we feel like we know the CTE Center at least fairly well now. But Ms. Pappas?
Thank you for the presentation, and it was really an exciting time to go look at the building. And thank you both for all that you're doing to make it work. Can you go back to the slide, or maybe you don't need to? Just the number of students that will be in each of the pathways? I think it was one of the first slides. Is that...are those numbers total? So, there's a morning session and there's an afternoon session? So, if the number's thirty, that means fifteen in the morning and fifteen in the afternoon?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so those students that are attending in the morning, then, or in the afternoon, the flip side of that, they're at their homeschool or whatever school they're enrolled in, is that correct?
That's correct.
How does that work for them, then? So, their credits, the credits that they're getting at the CTE program transfer to the... Help me understand that.
So, the two heavily weighted criteria for students to be admitted to the CTE Center, one was attendance.
Right.
And then, the second was an on-time graduation. So, half of their day will be spent at the CTE Center while they'll earn elective credits, and we hope additional credits. We're in the process of working through that. And then, the second part of their day will be at their homeschool, where they earn the additional core credits that they need towards graduation.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, President Matthews. So, when Ms. Schilling says we're working toward that, there is the possibility and work to what's called crosswalk standards, say, from a language arts class or standards from a science class into Career and Technical Education coursework, state-approved, that would then allow for students to meet a language arts requirement or science requirement while also meeting that elective credit in that Career and Technical Education pathway. And then, Ms. Schilling, can you talk a little bit about why those numbers are so small? I mean, a typical high school class easily has, you know, twenty-five to thirty-five students in it. Why do we have to...why are these numbers lower than typical high school class sizes?
Right. So, this is based off the recommendation of the Colorado Community College System, which is where we do have smaller class sizes in CTE courses, so that students are getting that one-on-one work with their instructor. And the CTE Center classes, classrooms, the building is just smaller. The classrooms are smaller. So, to meet the needs of our students, we have smaller numbers within these programs.
And it's my understanding that we also, in order for us to receive full Carl Perkins funding, which is federal funding for Career and Technical Education, which will be significant for Career and Technical Education Center, we also must maintain the requirements of numbers of students per square feet. Each program has different requirements for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Sorry, I have multiple questions for you. The first one is, you said you...that was amazing to see how many kids have applied, so it's exciting, and you can see that there is that need for all these additional pathways and whatnot. But you say that there is a waiting list. So, my question is, for each of these pathways, how many years do they need to complete further certification?
So, all of our pathways are two-year programs.
Okay.
And so, like we mentioned earlier, it's half-days, and so it'll be half-day. We are asking students to confirm their spot and committing to those two years.
Okay. You answered my question, then, because I was going to ask if a student got in next year and, you know, depending, I guess, where they're at. If they are a senior, though, and they want to complete the pathway, is that still an available option if they don't get in till their senior year?
Yeah, so, we are accepting rising seniors for twofolds. One, we want seniors there to get them to a jumpstart and launch them to their career option, their post-secondary option. After they graduate, we have options through some concurrent enrollment, through PTAC, through TRUP. We've got options that we can support these students post-graduation to get them through the rest of the pathway. By accepting seniors, it also helps us open up for the next cohort of sophomores and juniors to rise in behind them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
As you said, that there were two of the pathways that are not full. Which two were those again? Just so our kids, our students know those.
Yeah, so, we've kind of combined it. They used to be early childhood and teacher cadet. It's now just a teacher cadet pathway. We had twenty-three students apply for that. That is the only pathway that we don't have.
But there are still slots for teacher cadet.
Correct.
Just so our students know that. We want to make sure that our students know that, because those are the students that we need to hire in just a few years. So, I did want to draw attention to that. And also, there was one position, I think, that still remains unfilled for teaching, and that's welding instructor, right?
That's correct.
All right. So, if anybody knows a welding instructor that wants to teach, see these guys. Any other questions from our board members? Comments from board members? Well, I'm not seeing any, so thank you, guys, for being here tonight. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next, on the heels of that, we have a recommendation of name for the Career and Technical Education Center. And this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves a recommendation to name the new Career and Technical Education Center, District Six Career and Technical Education Center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say, or are we turning it back over?
I will just say, President Matthews, that by board policy, the Board of Education must approve the naming of schools or the changing of a school name. And so, and there's a policy that we followed around selecting the committee and how the name of the school was selected. And again, Jenny Schilling, our Director of Career and Technical Ed, and Jordan Carlberg, our CTE Pathway Specialist, is here to help us with this presentation.
Well, thank you, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and the Board of Education. I'm excited to share with you the name being recommended for the Career and Technical Education Center, located at fourteen-twenty Second Street in Greeley, that will provide five unique pathways that include construction with an electrical focus, welding, cosmetology, education, and cybersecurity. On December fourteenth, we convened a naming committee to work through the sixteen submissions for the naming of the CTE Center in accordance with board policy FF-R. Those in attendance included Wesley Patch, Head of Operations, of Vestas Windblades; Julie Hale, Executive Director of the Success Foundation and parent of D six students; Anthony Osmus, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools; Trish La Myers, Chief Communications Officer; Jordan Carlberg, CTE Pathway Specialist, and myself. The committee reviewed policy FFR, which outlines the naming of a school or facility, and the guidelines in consideration of each submission for the school. The committee reviewed the purpose of the CTE Center and discussed each submission. The committee reached consensus that evening on a naming of the CTE Center, and it is the recommendation of the committee to name the CTE Center District Six Career and Technical Education Center. And I share from this submission, and I quote from Lauren Alpham's, "The District Six Career and Technical Education Center is encompassing of the entire Greeley-Evan's community through the identification of the school district. Career and tech education is a large part of our district, and this center is an innovating and inspiring addition to our district, opening doors for students." Close quote. "District Six is truly dedicated to both career and college readiness." Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Schilling, Mr. Carlberg? Because I'm not seeing any, so thank you for the presentation. And I guess, if there are no comments, that means that we're ready to vote. So, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda tonight, we have reservations, sorry, to policy BEC executive sessions. And this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves revisions to policy BEC executive sessions as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we open this up for the board members to comment and question, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say on these revisions?
Thank you, President Matthews. This policy is the result of new legislation that passed last spring that allows additional provisions for boards of education go into executive session, so that we're following state law, and we've aligned with the Colorado School Boards Association in our implementation of this policy.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Not seeing any. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have revisions to G personnel policies, and this is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves revisions to G personnel policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, these look pretty straightforward, some pretty minor changes. Are there any comments that you have to make? Any comments or questions from board members on these personnel policies? Not seeing any. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next on our agenda are revisions to our I policies, instruction policies, and this is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District Six approves revisions to I instruction policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Again, these look pretty straightforward. Dr. Pilch, is there any comment that you need to make on these before we open this up to board members?
You know, President Matthews, we rarely get to talk about the positive outcomes of having gone through a pandemic. So, I'll just mention that the changes you see here are a result of what we learned through the pandemic, about learning can occur in a remote environment. It can be synchronous and asynchronous. And this policy allows us to utilize those minutes as part of our counted instructional minutes. And it came out of state legislation, again, that was passed last spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions? Ms. Sullivan? Ms. Sullivan?
There we go. I just had a question on the revisions for both ten point oh five and then the ten point oh six. Are these ones that were suggestions from CASB or are these internal changes? On the policies? For this one and the following one? Are these ones that were suggested by CASB or are these the ones that were rewritten within in-house?
I believe Ms. Sullivan is talking about the policies that have not yet come up for consideration. So, ten point oh five is one of them, Ms. Sullivan? I couldn't hear the first part. This one on instructional minutes?
Which policy, Ms. Sullivan? Is it ICA, IJ, or IHCD?
Oh, goodness, let's see. Sorry, let me open those up. It would be IJ on one of them. Were those CASB changes, or is that in-house changes?
Icy is...
No, IJ. Sorry.
IJ?
Yes.
Yes, okay. IJ is changes to our instructional resources and materials policy. This is a policy that, actually, I think you've asked for to be revised, Ms. Sullivan, and brought before the board around how materials and textbooks are selected in District Six and how materials come into our library. So, this is a cleanup of a previous policy. This work was done through a committee that worked in conjunction with several stakeholder groups, as well as other school districts, looking at their policies, looking at the American Libraries Association guidelines, and with our in-house, as well as outside legal counsel, to develop this policy proposal.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm going to just be right up front on both of these so that there's no surprise, but I'm going to vote no on both of these policies, because neither of them take into consideration the legitimate concerns of what the parents have and what their rights are. From prior board meetings, the entire board became upset and stated that the excerpts were inappropriate when we had a parent read them aloud. Director Nash, she became visibly upset, and Dr. Pilch, you called it pornography. The reading was so horrific that that night, the recorded meeting was not posted for several days. To date, there still exists a disclaimer at the beginning of that meeting that says, "The following video contains strong language. Viewer discretion is advised." Why are we continuing to allow this type of reading material when we have it listed with warnings on our website? Yet, the policies are given full discretion... These policies are now giving full discretion to each school individually to bring books and instructional... Bring in their books and the instructional material. The librarians and principals are pretty much the ones that are being allotted the full rights of what is allowed. You can't tell me that every librarian, every principal, and every teacher have the same morals, values, and beliefs from every school. Why are we making this a bigger challenge for the parents and for their voices to be heard? It is within their rights to protect the children from the teachings that go against their beliefs. And as we had a couple of comments tonight stating from parents that they want to ban the books. The parents have not asked for the book banning. They have only asked for an option to have it as an opt-in for parent choice. And so, because of that, I will be a no for the next two revisions.
So, President Matthews, I wonder, since the I policies are lumped together here, you know, we're actually looking for approval on three different policy revisions. I wonder if we might seek some advice from our legal counsel on how we might pull out... I think the policy that Ms. Sullivan is objecting to is IJ, if I'm correct, and not actually all three, IJ, Icy, ICA, and IHCD. And so, I am...or perhaps you are objecting to all three, and if you are, then I think the motion stands, and you can... Is there a second on the motion, Amy? Amy, do we have a second?
We've seconded the motion.
So, the motion, the second stand. So, I believe, Mr. Fall, I'll let you take this, but I believe we're probably going to need to vote. And if it were to be voted down, then it's a no on all the policies? Or how would we be able to pull one of the policies out, perhaps?
So, if I'm understanding correctly, Director Sullivan, you're speaking specifically to policy IJ?
IJ, and then also, well, the following one right after, but we haven't got to that one. So, yeah, just IJ, I'm against.
So, you could make a motion to amend at this time? Say, I move that the Board of Education amends?
May we do that, Mr. Fall? After a motion and the second are already on the table?
Yes.
So, would this be pulled off the table for further discussion later? Or would this be a full discussion tonight?
You could pull the motion, or you could pull IJ at this time for further discussion tonight, for kind of a standalone vote? And the board could vote on the other I policies as they were presented in their previous motion?
We could also vote to postpone the vote, right? We could motion to postpone the vote and discuss it later? I mean...
So, the Board of Education could move to vote no on the policy? So the Board of Education could move to vote no on the policies tonight, and we would kind of retable it and bring them back at the next board meeting?
Since there is a motion and a second on the table, Mr. Fall...
We'll need to vote, correct, Mr. Fall, on this motion. There's a first, a motion and a second.
You can amend a motion that's in process. You can move to amend the motion.
Okay.
So I think that's different than what we were advised earlier today, Mr. Fall? So, but we want to follow your advice.
We could also go into executive session if we want to spend some time talking over the legal principles and some legal advice surrounding Robert's Rules of Order.
Anyway, Ms. Sullivan, did you have any other comments? You were still, not just comments on this because we have some other board members that need to speak.
Okay, so only on IJ is the only one that I have an issue with, so I guess I move to, can I pull it from the agenda then at this point in time and we vote on the other two?
I think she could make an amendment to...
Is this like a standalone where each one is separate, or can we pull out just one section of it?
You could say I amend Agenda Item 10.05.
Before we do that, should we not have continued conversation in the rest of our opinions on what Ms. Sullivan said, or not?
Well, Ms. Sullivan has the floor. So, I mean, she can make that motion to amend. What I think she can amend is the motion. But Ms. Sullivan, will you yield your time for just so that other people can speak to...
Or she can amend the actual policy if there's a specific piece of the policy that you don't like or disagree with. You could say...
Just go ahead, Ms. Mash.
Well, can I just move to pull that one off for further discussion maybe at the next work session? Is that a possibility?
You could make a motion to do that, and then it would be followed by a second, and then you would take a vote on that amendment.
Okay, well, then I move to remove IJ from Greeley Evans School District six's policy on 10.05 for the instructional resources and materials.
Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Ms. Mash?
Well, I was just trying to find out what, like, if there is a specific line or a piece of the, of the policy that you object to. And I don't know, if we're going to discuss this as a board, then I'm curious, you know, just like, well, what would you have? How would you like the materials to be selected? I mean, it's in, so anyway, I don't know. That's what, I'm just wondering if that, or if we're having a conversation about the policy or...
Ms. Sullivan, can you answer Ms. Mash's question for her, please?
Definitely. So I've had prior conversations with both Michael Matthews and Dr. Pilch about having a, coming up with a policy where we have a way to vet the books before they even hit the library of the school so that we have across the board the same construct going in so that we don't come across this issue down the road again. And I think the first line where it says, "The classroom and school library materials will be selected by school librarians and appropriate personnel approved by the school administrator," that empowers one person to bring in all materials. And again, going back to the reading across the board, when Ms. Weber read that excerpt, we all had issues with that one. So to me, we need to have a policy that books are vetted prior to protect the kids. And again, I'm not into the book banning. I like what the parents have come forth with where they want to have an opt-in option so that they can have the choice of what reading material their kids have access to.
So Ms. Sullivan, I think if you go down a couple paragraphs, so I see what you're saying with that line that says, "Classroom and school library materials will be selected by the school librarians or appropriate personnel approved by the school administrator in consultation with district admin, who shall develop and implement a process for the selection of new instructional materials." So if you go down two paragraphs more, there's this single line that says, "When initially selecting materials or accepting donations of materials, the following criteria will be considered." So it does have one through 12 different criteria that need to be considered in selection of material. So there is a process outlined in 12 different steps, so I'm not sure...
Well, this is the one that I would like revised because obviously with the issues that we have that's been brought to us with the parents, we need to revisit this and make sure that the books that are in the library are following these. And I kind of am figuring they're not with some of the things that we've heard that was read aloud.
I guess I don't understand what...
Hold on, Ms. Pappas? She's been waiting.
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering about this whole process. We have a motion, we had the second, and Ms. Taylor made a motion that wasn't seconded, so it's tabled. And so as we're talking about this, we're talking about, are we talking about changing things now, or are we just trying to help Ms. Sullivan understand the policy?
That's correct.
Okay, because I'm really, I was confused about what we were doing.
People were trying to understand what Ms. Sullivan's objection was. Her, we are debating this policy as it is presented.
Okay, thank you.
And I've lost track. Mr. Norwood, you haven't spoken yet, and I see your light.
I just had a question for Dr. Pilch. Would this stop students completely from being in the library or just stop the books? Do you have a final say in this? When we look at the books, does it come down to you? Or is that, am I off base here?
So if, thank you for the question, Mr. Norwood. If you look at the first paragraph, the second paragraph, the new paragraph that is added that's the underlying language where it says that the school librarian or appropriate personnel approved by the school administrator, so that's a first step that's important, the school administrator approves, who else in the building, in consultation with district administrators. So the building administrator and the librarian or whomever else is chosen in the building will not be acting independently of the district. We will have folks at the district level who are responsible for ensuring that the guidelines at the bottom, the criteria at the bottom are actually followed. So a process is being developed that follows these guidelines that are at the bottom that ensures that the building does have some guide wires in which to select materials. And then by saying the final decision rests with the superintendent or designee, that means someone here in this office out of Dr. Daddery's department will actually have a final purview over any materials that are selected in the future to go into our libraries and into our curriculum, which curriculum, of course, comes here for approval, and the board approves curriculum adoptions. But typically, the board has not approved library books. They approve budget to spend library books. But this policy puts the onus on us here at the district level to have oversight so that the pure choice-making is not done in isolation at the building level.
So there would be a system of checks and balances, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bentley?
She answered most of my questions. I guess mainly I just would like to know what part of the 12 steps Taylor isn't happy with or not content with and what she wants to add because I think this is doing what she wants, and it might, maybe it just doesn't read the way she wants, so maybe, or I guess I'm just confused on what she's not happy with. Because this seems like the answer to what you're saying.
Yeah, and I realize that there's the list down below, but even if you look at number two, "Be appropriate for a subject area for that age," well, we have that excerpt read in here, and now on our website, we have a discretionary warning on there, so it's not appropriate for K through 12 of what was read here.
That's why the policy is getting amended.
But I want more specifics on that because right now, if we look at it, we've put it all in the hands of two people pretty much. We're above where you're saying it's going to be selected by the librarians and appropriate personnel approved by school administrator. But when you continue on, and it's actually on the next revision for 10.06 where it's the librarian and the principal that selects those. So to me, that's putting a lot of empowerment on one person primarily, which is just your school librarians.
Any other?
Yeah, I just think that we can't micromanage on every level. I mean, we govern through policies, and this is the policy telling them how to do their job and...
So President Matthews, it's hard to capture everything in policy to make this as crystal clear as we want it to be, I suppose. And I'm certainly open to future revisions. So what I, but what I want to make sure is clear is that the building principal and the librarian will not be working in isolation autonomously. What is different with this new process and which was really important to us in developing this is there will be a team here at the district level that vets materials that are selected. That has not been the practice in the past in relation to library materials. And so that team will be trained in which resources they go to to determine age appropriateness and emotional and ability level.
Right, just so again, everyone is clear, this actually is tightening our policies and especially around how books are donated and given to the district. So any other questions from board members? Ms. Lemon, I think we're ready for a vote.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fittzie?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Nay.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next are revisions to KEC, Public Concerns/Complaints About Instructional Resources, and this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District six approves revisions to policy KEC, Public Concerns/Complaints About Instructional Resources with the following. On page two, subsection one, after religious views or gender, add or gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation.
Second. Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, is there anything before we open this up for discussion from board members? Is there anything you would like to say on these policies and revisions?
The policy is intended to be a revision to better capture our review work on complaints around materials and resources. We had not had a complaint for nearly, at least 15 years in District six, and so we are getting a chance to work through the complaint process, and that opportunity has presented us with the need to work with legal counsel as well as with other experts in the field. And as a result, we have codified our practice. We've pulled much of what was in regulation and in an exhibit into actual board policy so it has final purview of the board, and I'm happy to open it up for questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Mr. Norwood?
I always forget to push that button. I would have just one other question. Would this mean that the parents would be able to opt out of the library or opt out of the books?
Yes, yes, Mr. Norwood. And parents have that right now. It's simply a matter of notifying the school that you wish to have your child opted out of access to the library or out of access to certain materials in that library. There's also the process for opting out of content that is within the curriculum here. We do have parents who do ask for students to be opt out of usage, and it's, you know, we build a workaround for that with the library as well as with technology.
Mr. Bentley?
Can I just get some clarification on the extra part that Terry put in on the motion?
Yes.
Or could you reread it? I'll take notes this time and pay better attention. Sorry.
So I'll reread it, and then I'm referring to page two of the policy. So I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District six approves revisions to policy KEC, Public Concerns/Complaints About Instructional Resources with the following addition on page two, subsection one, after, add after religious views, add gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, are you adding something that's not on here? Because I'm not, is that what you're doing exactly?
I'm amending the proposal so that on page two of the policy. If you go down about halfway, it says, "A book shall not be excluded because of the writer's race or nationality or political or religious views." And I'm, in my proposal, I'm adding sexual orient, or this proposal is adding sexual orientation, sexual, or sorry, gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation, adding those after religious views.
And that is now the motion?
That is the motion.
Are there any questions or comments, board members, on the motion? Ms. Mash?
I would just say I like this addition as well. It's just adding descriptions of authors, I guess, or of authors' identities. So it just was one piece that was sort of left out.
Any other questions or comments? And I'll just clarify for everyone watching, all we're really doing is moving some things that were in our regulation over into our policy and codifying some of our practice. So, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fittzie?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Nay.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, our charter school renewal applications. And so we will get a presentation. And Dr. Pilch, would you like to introduce this presentation?
I will. Thank you, President Matthews. I'm happy to introduce Mr. Brian Lamos, who is our Director of English Language CLD, Cultural Linguistic Development and Instruction, and Mr. Nathan Fall, our in-house legal counsel. Mr. Lamos is our charter school liaison with the school district. And first, you're going to hear a presentation on the actual charter school application process for renewal. And then you will have each of the charter schools that are up for renewal, Salida del Sol and Westridge Academy come forward to you each separately for consideration for approval on their renewal. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lamos.
Right, thank you, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board. Tonight, I'm bringing to you two charter renewal applications, one for Salida del School Academy and the other for Westridge Academy. While these are both action items, I'd like to share some information about the process in these two schools' applications before the board takes action. The first slide that you're going to look at outlines a process as outlined by the Colorado Department of Education. While renewals for charter schools are not automatic, they do reapply by terms noted by each individual charter contract and are earned through maintaining academic results, assuring financial viability, and assuring operational effectiveness. The third bullet outlines the fact that charter schools have greater autonomy, and that's in exchange for greater accountability, which is maintained through the renewal process. The next slide that we're going to look at is a nice visual. This slide is provided by the Colorado Department of Education. It provides the process regarding the whole charter renewal cycle, beginning with establishing the expectations of the charter that are outlined in the contract and includes monitoring and reporting all the way to intervening if necessary. The formal renewal process includes providing a body of evidence on the established expectations, a negotiated renewal link for the next contract, and a process to follow should and non-renewal be necessary based on low performance. Locally, policy LBD with its accompanying regulation outlines a process we follow more specifically here in District six for charter renewals. The regulation outlines the dates for submission along with the application requirements in which both schools have met all deadlines and expectations. Additionally, we have taken these applications... Additionally, we have taken these applications to the District Accountability Committee for feedback, and tonight we bring the renewal applications to the Board of Education for I want to share with you a few highlights for each of the two school applications. First, Salida del Sol Academy. They are not requesting any changes in their current contract, including, or in their contract, including waivers from local or state curriculum, administrative supports, in the way of fees to the district or within special education services, and the way those are provided to the charter school. They have requested a five-year contract that will begin July 2023 and end June 2028. This contract renewal application fairly, is fairly straightforward and meets all district Next, we have Westridge Academy, their renewal application. They have also not requested any changes in administrative supports or with special education delivery of services. They do have a few minor adjustments to their waivers of preschool and curriculum. They do not have a preschool program, so they took out the prior waiver in reference to preschool. Additionally, they have added more specific language to curriculum choices that make them, that makes Westridge Academy more unique. They have also requested a five-year contract renewal term. However, they have requested an option to revisit their contract at the end of three years to extend their contract another 10 years. Conditions agreed, agreed upon in which to revisit the contract at that time include ensuring leadership stability, a reduction in OCR and Title IX complaints, and satisfactory achievement results. We feel that this will allow both the district and charter school to ensure the schools continue to meet all expectations as outlined in the contract agreement before extending additional years. This application also meets all district requirements. Thank you for your consideration of these actions, and we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Lemos. I think we'll probably have a few, and leading off, we have Ms. Pappas.
Thank you. So when you, going back to Westridge Academy, you said they want to come back in three years to renew their contract, and the items that you mentioned that they will need to, you're, you're monitoring that, or who's monitoring that, or how do we know that that's accomplished?
We monitor that through the district. Basically, Dr. Pilch, do you want to answer that?
I'm, I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Lamos. So, you know, it's been a few rough years for Westridge, quite frankly, and I know they're here and they would nod their heads, yes, I see them, and, but we really feel like they, they are moving to get things on track. They, they have solid leadership in place. They participated in our trainings around Title IX and understand the importance of addressing, you know, Title IX and office civil rights violations, and I, I think really what we're looking for are, are three things: a stable leadership, no or diminishing number of Title IX and OCR complaints, and we want to see their achievement back at performance. And we are confident they can get there. You know, when you have a, you all have seen this in other district schools, when you have a turn in leadership, especially multiple times in multiple years, you will likely see a decline in, in student achievement, but we're confident they'll get there, and I have done this in a previous school district where we'd seen one of our charters slip a little bit, they wanted to come back for 10 years, and we said, ooh, let's, let's not go so fast, but how about we put in the option to reopen in three years, and then we could consider the 10 years at that time? And so I'm confident we'll be back here with you in three years, and really pleased about the work we've been able to do with Westridge Academy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from board members? I'm not seeing any. I, I would just like to say, and this is for you, Dr. Pilch, just thank you for, for your work with our charter schools. Our relationship with our charter schools is, is tremendous, and that's, that's something that's debated across the state and across the country, and, and we just, we have such a fantastic relationship with, with all of our charters, and we're so proud of that, and, and that, that has not always been the case, and, and so I just want to thank you for, for your leadership and in this area as well. So I don't guess we have any other questions for you, and so we'll, we'll move on to our, our next, our next agenda item, and this is to approve Salida del Sol Academy Charter School Renewal Application, and this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopts a resolution approving the renewal of Salida del Sol Academy as recommended by staff.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, we need to read our resolution. So Ms. Sullivan, would, would you like to read the resolution for us, please, tonight?
Resolution approving the Salida del Sol renewal application and charter contract. Whereas in 2013 pursuant to the Charter Schools Act CRS 22-30.5-101 to 120, the Act, the Board of Education of Weld County District Six granted the charter Salida del Sol Academy, and whereas on or before November 28th of 2022, the school submitted to the Board a charter school renewal application seeking renewal of its charter. And whereas at the public board meeting held on January 23rd, 2023, the Board approved an extension of the renewal application as mutually agreed between the school and the district, and whereas district staff have reviewed the renewal application and have provided a written recommendation, including the reasons supporting the recommendation regarding the renewal application, and whereas district staff also have presented a charter school contract containing terms and conditions acceptable to the district and to the school. whereas at a public board meeting held on February 13th of 2023, district staff responded to the questions from the Board and presented additional information to the Board regarding the renewal application, and whereas the Board has thoroughly considered the renewal application, board policy, the Act, and the written submissions from the school and the public Hold on, sorry, I got lost. From the school and the public, the recommendations of the district's staff and contract. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board as follows. One, the approval of the renewal application is in the best interest of the district, its students, and the community, and the school's charter is hereby renewed for a five-year term, subject to the conditions set forth in this resolution. Two, the contract in substantially the form with the substantially the content presented at this meeting of the Board is hereby approved, authorized, and confirmed. Three, that the Board President or the Superintendent are authorized to execute the contract in substantially the form with substantially the content presented at this meeting of the Board for and on behalf of the district, but with such changes therein as shall be consistent with the resolution as the District Council and President or Superintendent shall Four, that the district and the school shall execute the contract no later than 10 days after the adoption of this resolution. Approved and adopted this 13th, the day of February 2023, Weld County School District by Michael Matthews, President, Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Dr. Pilch, before we open this up for comment from board members, is there anything you would like to say on this charter renewal?
Thank you, President Matthews. I, I would, and I see some of their team here tonight as well. You know, I just want to say that, you know, it was not that many years ago that we had Salida del Sol before us with really kind of district improvement, a corrective action plan, because we were so significantly concerned about student achievement and, and again, turnover in leadership, and, and I, and I will just say that in the last few years, they have dedicated a significant effort to really moving their student achievement, and we're pleased with their results. They're moving in the right direction. They have, they have excellent leadership in place, and we just look forward to working with them in years to come and, and for the work to continue with Salida del Sol in District Six.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Any questions or comments from board members? I'm not seeing any, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fidzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have the approval of Westwood, sorry, Westridge Academy Charter School Renewal Application, and this is an action item that will require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopts a resolution approving the renewal of Westridge Academy as recommended by staff.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we go any further, Mr. Bentley, would you read this resolution for us?
Resolution approving Westridge Academy Renewal Application and Charter Contract. Whereas in 2010 pursuant to the Charter Schools Act CRS 22-30.5-101 to 120, the Act, the Board of Education, Board of Weld County School District Six, the district granted a charter to Westridge Academy Charter School, the school. And whereas on or before November 30th, 2022, the school submitted to the Board a charter renewal, charter school renewal application seeking renewal of its charter, the renewal application, and whereas at public board meeting held on January 23rd, 2023, the Board approved an extension of the renewal application as mutually agreed between the school district and, whereas the district, the school and the district, and whereas district staff have reviewed the renewal application and have provided a written recommendation, including the reasons supporting the recommendation regarding the renewal application, and whereas district staff have, also have presented a charter school contract containing terms and conditions acceptable to the district and the school, the contract, and whereas the public, at a public board meeting held on February 13th, 2023, district staff presented additional information to the Board, Board regarding the renewal application, and whereas the Board has thoroughly considered the renewal application, board policy, the Act, and written submissions from the school and the public, and the recommendations of the district staff and the contract. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board as follows. One, that approval of the renewal application is in the best interest of the district, its students, and the community, and the school's charter is hereby renewed for a five-year term, subject to the conditions set forth in this resolution. Two, that the contract in substantially the form and with it substantially the content presented at this meeting of the Board is hereby approved, authorized, and confirmed. Three, that the Board President or the Superintendent are authorized to execute the contract in substantially the form and with substantially the content presented at this meeting for and on behalf of the district, but with such changes therein as shall be consistent with this resolution and the district's council and President and/or Superintendent shall approve. Four, that the district and the school shall execute the contract no later than 10 days after the adoption of the date of this resolution approved and adopted this 13th, day of February 2023, Weld County School District Six by Michael Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Before we comment on this, Dr. Pilch, is there anything additionally you need to say about Westridge's application?
You know, I'll just add, President Matthews, that again, that, you know, I'm grateful for the, the negotiation process, and I'm, I'm grateful for the efforts at Westridge Academy, and, you know, our parents in our district want choice. They value choice, and, I mean, parents look for the school that is going to best meet the needs of their students, and both of these charter schools are a big, important part of that choice here in District Six, and so I'm, I'm pleased to bring the recommendation to you, and I'm pleased to have you consider the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Saying none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fidzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda, finally on our agenda, is the first read of the 2023-2024 school year calendar. And so this is not an action item. We don't need to make any motions on this one. Dr. Pilch, will you introduce this for us?
Thank you, President Matthews. Ms. Christina Crane, one of our directors in human resources, has come to the podium, and I, I see that Ms. Snyder, our president of the Greeley Education Association, is coming to back her up. Should she?
Coming to back her up, yeah. Welcome, Ms. Snyder. So this is not new information to you all. You have had three different work sessions now where we've talked about calendar tonight. We, we reviewed this one calendar proposal with you in the work session, and so Ms. Crane, for the, the good of the audience and for you all, again, we'll run through the recommendation. This is not a decision item tonight. We will come back at our next board meeting asking for approval. Should there be other pieces of this calendar you would like us to adjust, this would be the time to let us know after Ms. Crane's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, President Matthews, Board of Education, and Dr. Pilch. Thank you for all the time that you have dedicated to exploring calendar options and for your support of our team that is doing this work. The Calendar Committee is an inclusive group that includes multiple perspectives, helping us to see and consider how each potential change will impact our full community. The team includes parents with students of all ages, elementary and secondary teachers and administrators, and instructional and operational district leaders. This diverse team ensures we consider broad-ranging impacts as we create proposals, things like family activities and travel, parents' work schedules, classroom instruction and lesson planning, assessment, collaboration, professional development, employee pay and work schedules, bond construction, the student count window, nutrition services, CHASA schedules, and most importantly, student growth and achievement. Board Policy IC, ICA, charges the committee with creating a calendar that meets or exceeds the requirements of state law and includes a sufficient number of days to allow the Superintendent flexibility to support the district's educational objectives as outlined in Innovation 2030. The process for developing the school year calendar is guided by board policy, research, committee work, and feedback from a variety of stakeholders. This year, we heard from the District Accountability Committee, Greeley Education Association Executive Board and Membership, Teachers Advisory Council, the Student Council of Representatives, you, the Board of Education, our Classified Council, and the District Six Principals and Assistant Principals. Our meeting schedule this year looked a little different than in previous years. Typically, the Calendar Committee meets throughout December and January, but this year, a subset of the Calendar Committee came together under the charge of the broader, excuse me, of the broader Time and Learning Committee to explore the ways different calendar options could support our students and staff. Beginning in December, the Time and Learning Subcommittee drafted four calendar options that, as Dr. Pilch mentioned, we'll continue to consider over the next year. The Larger Calendar Committee met in January to refine the calendar draft you'll review Before we review the full calendar, I want to give you a breakdown of the similarities and differences between the proposed calendar and this past year's calendar. Many aspects of the 23-24 calendar closely mirror the 22-23 calendar, providing consistency for parents, staff, and students. This proposal continues the Monday late start schedule that we've seen over the last couple years. It also minimizes short weeks and maintains professional development. The start and end dates are very similar to the last couple years, which allows for a significant amount of bond construction to take place this summer. One slight change you'll see is that we've added in two four-day weekends in response to staff and parent feedback. We have long weekends in October and April that will provide a little relief during some of our busy seasons. One other change you'll notice is a shift in winter break. This year, winter break will be the last week of December and the first week of January. We chose to keep the winter break at two full weeks with weekends on either side rather than moving to a Wednesday-to-Wednesday schedule like our calendar might have looked had we just followed the shifting days. Some highlights for our students. Students will see their first day of school this fall, if you approve this proposal, on August 14th. Our high school students will all begin that day, and grades one through eight will begin a rolling start August 14th and finish on August 15th. Our kindergarten students would have a rolling start August 17th and 18th. This year, we're proposing a week-long Thanksgiving break like we've seen in the past, as well as the full two-week break with weekends on either side that we mentioned just a moment ago. We'll also align our spring break with UNC and Ames Community College, March 11th through 15th, and those two midsemester breaks I mentioned are listed there as well, October 27th to 30th, and April 25th to 26th. For our staff, we'll have our new professionals, our new teachers join us four days before our returning staff start in August, so they will begin on August 1st, and our returning staff will begin just following that. We will, like I said, continue our late start Mondays, allowing time for our staff to work together and individually. The other highlight here that we have are balanced semesters. So our students will see 83 instructional days in first semester and 87 days in second semester, allowing for the semester, allowing for the extra time that we use for our assessment, our state assessment in April. Here's a look at the calendar as a whole. So you'll see there again at the top those start dates for our staff as well as our students in August, the breaks that we outlined previously, and then we will see graduation the weekend of Memorial Day this year, so students end that week just before the holiday. We're happy to take any comments or questions you may have.
Mr. Bentley?
I told you guys earlier, but I just want to say thanks again. This was a long time coming, and you guys have put in a lot of offside hours and, and took a lot of considerations, brought us a lot of considerations, and, and we've heard 50 ways that you, and whys and whys not. So just, just good job, and thank you for, for doing the work and, and bringing us something that you're confident is, is best for our school or district right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would just echo those thanks. And I would, I would ask that you take those thanks back to your committee. We, we do know that they've put in a lot of time on this and have looked at this so many different ways and have brought us so many different versions. I, I just can't imagine how many hours that, it's always a lot of work, but I know this year it's been especially a lot of work. And so thank you, guys. Thank you, and please thank your committee for us. And I think that's all we have for tonight. So thank you. Thank you, guys, for joining us, whether you've joined us online or in person. We do appreciate your presence, and this meeting is adjourned.